Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, September 18th, 2024. Meeting and public comment announcements, all council meeting will be livestreamed on the city's website. And for those joining us at the table, please do not turn your microphones off. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland, Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith.
Ms. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson. Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record. You will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Harold Keller. If not, we moved on to our next registered speaker, Brandon Mendoza.
Well, once again, here to talk about PC TV. And first off, I want to thank Ralph Williams for his support of the TV station for being here and talking about it. But I know it's going to sound corny and preachy, but even though it may sound corny and preachy, it really is sincere. The reason I'm here, actually, the reason I've been coming here all this time about PC TV, I know that people who have money, the main thing is to support really serious causes that matter, such as finding a cure for cancer, other diseases, helping people who really need it. So supporting a TV station is way down the line after those things. But in a different way, the station was important to Pittsburgh because it gave Pittsburgh people an opportunity to have an outlet, let, express themselves, entertain, be controversial, all that kind of stuff. And it's just that it said Pittsburgh. I was on that station and I got that Pittsburgh accent, that funny Pittsburgh accent that people laugh about. They say, "Oh, that Pittsburgh accent is so funny, the way you talk." And so that's one of the things that I was taking advantage of on the station. I wanted to entertain, although you get a cold following, won't get a mainstream following, but the important thing is just to be entertained and express your opinions on other things. They had good shows, sports talk shows, political shows, music shows, cooking shows, et cetera. So it said Pittsburgh, it was all about Pittsburgh, and that's what I feel was so important. Of course, I wanted for myself too, can't lie about that. Of course, I got that ego. But believe it or not, I really do care about other people. People may not believe that, and might think I'm just egotistical and arrogant, but I honestly really do care about other people. And it was so important to so many other people to have that station. And at the beginning, when I started there 15 years ago, it was believed that it was a religious station, all about religion. But then variety, started getting more variety, and that was really great. It was just like, wow, it's Pittsburgh. You could have 500 channels and not be able to find anything good on any of the 500 other channels. But at least with that channel, you've got Pittsburgh, and you've got Gersay, and it was like, wow. Like I said, I'm very, I know this sounds tripe, like I said, preachy, but it's really not. It's really coming from the heart, whether you want to believe it or not. And I'm looking forward, Mr. Williams, to see what he has to say. So have a good day. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next registered speaker is Brandon Mendoza.
How's it going? How's everybody doing today? My name is Brandon Mendoza. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I want to thank Councilman Coghill for offering a common sense amendment on the pending medical marijuana legislation. I lead Publicing Government Affairs at the Master Builders Association of Western PA. We are the voice of construction in this region. Our members are union signatory contractors that pay family sustaining wages and benefits, and our members pride themselves on a safety first, on safety first workplaces. I'm here to address an important issue concerning safety in the construction industry, specifically the use of medical marijuana by construction workers and the impact on workplace safety. As we know, the construction industry is a critical sector in our city. It's responsible for shaping our infrastructure, building the spaces that propel our innovation, and supporting economic growth. However, construction is inherently a safety sensitive industry, requiring attention to detail, physical coordination, split second decision making, all in the name of avoiding accidents and promoting safety. With the increasing legalization of medical marijuana across many states and municipalities, including PA, we are seeing more workers utilizing cannabis as a means of treating medical conditions. While we're not here to contest the efficacy of that, and we think that there is true benefits in that, you know, when it comes to, you know, to a safety sensitive industry like the construction industry, you know, safety is first and testing protocols are in place to ensure a safe workplace. The other thing there is that testing protocols have not kept up with some of the recent legislation. All of these issues are exactly why in Philadelphia, who passed a similar ordinance a number of years ago, they excluded the safety sensitive construction industry from their legislation. So what we're here today, what I'm here today to say is, to balance the medical needs of the broader workforce with the unique needs of the safety sensitive construction industry, we recommend an amendment that excludes bona fide CBA contractors from this amendment. Importantly, that does not exclude any of our white collar workforce workers in offices. They would still have to comply.
Thank you very much. There being no further registered speakers, we'll now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Council. My name is Steve Mazza. I am a council representative for Eastern Atlantic State's Regional Council of Carpenters. I am also Vice President of Pittsburgh Building Trades, Vice President Allegheny County Labor Council. I've been in this industry, I could say 50 years, working with my father, growing up in the carpenters' union for 35 years. And over the years, seeing a lot of people getting hurt while not on any type of medical marijuana, because in those days, you didn't have, we didn't have the safety equipment or anything. So I agree with Mr. Mendoza. The Master Builders Association represents the carpenters, and we represent over 5,000 members in this area here, seven, eight counties. There's probably 3,000 in Allegheny County alone. So we believe in safety, it's safety first. Until everything else catches up with everything, we need to be concerned about who's coming home at night, 10 fingers, 10 toes for their families. That's what we have to understand. We understand that our workers, some people do need medical marijuana cannabis, because after so many years in our industry, there is pain. There's a lot, it's hard to hang drywall, you know, for 20, 30 years over your head. We get that. But until we figure out how to make this thing work with the testing and everything, I think it's, we have to go with the amendment from Councilman Coghill to cut out the CBAs that actually have CBAs. Even if you look at the work in the city with non-union contractors, exploited workforce, the injuries and the people that have gotten killed over in Lawrenceville, somebody falling off a roof, there's been a lot of things that happened. So we have to make sure safety is first. If we don't, we're not helping our constituents in the city of Pittsburgh, our workers, or anybody. So I thank you for your time, and we ask the carpenters to support Councilman Coghill's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning. Special Agent Sunshine. I just want to return and send any voodoo, hexes, curses that any of you may send to me, in Jesus' name I pray, amen. Father, thank you for what you've brought me through that I can now use to help others in their struggles. Thank you that I have something to give, some encouragement to share, and some blessing to impart. Help me to give away what you've given to me. Thank you for Jesus who came not to be served, but to serve others and to give His life as a ransom for many. Help me to be like Him and keep my eyes open for the people and opportunities You bring me to serve and bless others, in Jesus' name, amen. This comes from Genesis 12:2, which says, "I will bless you; I will make your name great, and you will be a blessing." God named me Sunshine to shine a light on all the injustice in the world. And it's amazing, He led me right here to this room. And the first time I came in here, what I encountered was darkness. I felt it in my spirit, and I'm not going to pretend like I didn't. I'm going to let the whole world know that that's what I experienced the first time I came in this room. The first time I spoke, Mosley, you laughed at a lot of things I had to say. I don't see you laughing right now. It doesn't seem to be funny anymore, huh? What you're going through, we'll all find out. Jesus, thank you for the reminder of Your promises to establish a new heaven and earth, to wipe away every tear from our eyes, and to bring perfect peace to that which is chaos now. I trust You. Please fill my heart with hope as I look to You. Everything about Me was changed, stolen, everything that belonged to Me, everything that has My name on it was taken from Me. You people have done a lot to do that. Somebody even changed their sex from a man to a woman and married somebody to steal what belongs to Me, what has My name on it. Really? You think nobody will ever find out? I promise you. A lot of people already know about it, and I'm here to shine a light on it. I'm the light that God chose to expose what's been done to Me, and I'm not going to hide anymore. Documentation has been signed saying I'm dead. Do I look dead to anybody? I'm very much alive. But whoever signed that documentation, we're going to find out about who did that too. Matthew 6:22-23 says, "If therefore the light that is in you is darkness, how great is that darkness?" I'm the light that's going to shine on that darkness, I promise you. That's why God sent me here. "Those who plan injustice will harvest disaster, and their reign of terror will come to an end." That's Proverbs 22:8. Proverbs 23:16 says, "Everything in Me will celebrate when You speak what is right. Justice will be served."
Thank you very much. Are there any further speakers? Any further speakers? There being no further speakers, we will now move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. And our next, our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee that I chair.
Bill Number 909 supplemental paper, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant payable to the Allegheny County Department of Court Records for a single payment in 2024 in an amount not to exceed $500,000, and payment of the City of Pittsburgh petition to interplead and discharge of all liability and costs in the litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 909, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us to deferred papers, Bill 705.
Bill 705, ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title VI Conduct, Article V Discrimination, Chapter 651, findings and policy in Chapter 659, unlawful practices to make medical marijuana patients a protected class and restrict discrimination against them.
To approve with discussion?
We have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so I'm going to start out by reminding everyone, medical marijuana is legal in the state of Pennsylvania, and it is illegal in the state of Pennsylvania for employers to discriminate against medical marijuana patients. All this bill does is to reinforce the existing state law by specifically adding medical marijuana patients to the protected class in Pittsburgh and by clearly defining discriminatory practices. And then it offers those patients recourse should they find themselves discriminated against via the Commission on Human Relations, the city commission on human relations. And of course, this bill applies to all industries, right? But the reality is, at least in Pittsburgh, is that there is one major industry that consistently refuses to recognize the legal right of Pennsylvanians to use medical marijuana to treat a serious medical condition, and this is the construction industry. Among the 20 or so conditions that can be, that, you know, for which medical marijuana can be a treatment include cancer and remission therapy, epilepsy, PTSD, Crohn's disease, chronic pain, and opioid use disorder. The list goes on. So that means that if you work in construction today and your doctor recommends medical marijuana to manage any of these very common conditions, you're losing your job, and that is wrong. You know, changing course is very hard, and I understand that. And I understand that this bill puts our labor organizations in a difficult position. Because just like any other organizations, they compete for jobs, right? They need to be able to provide the level of service demanded of their employers. That's why this bill was held for two months, and, you know, that's why we're going to have two competing amendments to discuss today. I know Councilman Coghill will have the chance to present his. I want to underscore, this is not about safety. The reason that medical marijuana protections are so important to construction workers is that there is a health and wellness crisis in the construction industry. According to the CDC and the Center for Construction Research and Training, and this is a quote, "Construction workers have significantly higher rates of injuries, fatalities, death by suicide, and overdose deaths than American workers overall. For example, although construction workers are only about 7% of the entire workforce, they were 20% of on-the-job fatalities and 16% of opioid overdoses. Injury rate in the construction industry is 77% higher than the national average. 10% of construction workers use opioid pain medication, and those work-related injuries were nearly, and those with work-related injuries were nearly four times as likely to use opioids. Approximately 15% of workers, construction workers who are prescribed opioids, become long-term users. And the death rate due to opioid overdose in the construction is six to seven times higher in the construction trades than in any other industry." And the employers know this. They know this. And when they say they're not able to test UR, if in this bill, if someone is suspected of intoxication, or if they've had, and/or if they've had a workplace accident, you can test that worker. And if that worker has a card and you need a further verification, you can do a blood test and determine whether or not that worker has 10% nanograms per milliliter or higher, which is laid out in the Pennsylvania law, in which case they can be excluded from all of the dangerous tasks that were listed by our speaker earlier. So I just want that to be clear. So in the First Amendment, the one that I'm going to propose, right, simply removes labor organizations from the equation. And so, meaning that, you know, while discriminating, I have to underscore this, while discrimination against medical marijuana patients is still illegal in Pennsylvania, it would just mean that our Commission on Human Relations would not be tasked with addressing those specific complaints. And I do want to explain why I feel comfortable with that compromise. The reality is, while our jurisdiction here on city council is the city of Pittsburgh, we have labor organizations all over the county that are competing for work in the region, for construction jobs in the region and in the city. And I don't want to put those organizations that are here in the city with their apprentice programs here in the city where our young people can access them, right? I don't want to put those organizations at a disadvantage to other organizations that are outside the jurisdiction, right? You know, and also, you know, I've had extensive conversations with labor leaders on this topic, and everyone knows that it is the employers who are making this difficult for everyone. I can't tell you how many times I've heard, "Oh, if they would just do a nine-panel test instead of a 10-panel test, if they would just, if they would just," right? It is the employers who are making this difficult on everyone, knowing the dire issues with opioids and whatnot that are facing workers. So, you know, this amendment basically puts the city in a position to deal with the discrimination by the employers and only by the employers first. Now, I do want to contrast, and again, Councilman Coghill will have his chance to present, I want to contrast that with the other amendment. This amendment does not exclude the construction industry. It excludes any employee working under a collective bargaining agreement from seeking recourse from discrimination from the city. This allows employers, not just general contractors, but any employer to bypass discrimination laws when negotiating with their union, you know, without worrying that those employees are going to be able to seek help from the city. So in short, it disincentivizes both union membership, right, making it less attractive to join a union, any union, should your union, you know, should the employer sort of put the screws to the union to require drug testing for medical marijuana patients. It also creates a city service via the Office of Equal Protection that is not available, sorry, that is available to non-union workers but isn't available to union workers. It doesn't make sense. So, you know, I understand that this amendment is supported by the building trades. I understand that. I saw the letter. But the reality is, this is, you know, my, is that this is based in fear. This is based in fear about pushing the employers on which they depend for contracts, fear about pushing employers on the issue. But we here at council, we don't need to be afraid. All we need to do as Pittsburgh City Council is with right for the workers in the city. And that means helping medical marijuana patients fight for their legal right to use medical marijuana without it costing them their job. And so, at any rate, with that, I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill 0705.
Motion to amend. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion on the proposed amendment for Bill 705? Council President followed by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understand your amendment appropriately. The steelworkers are not based in the city of Pittsburgh, so this would actually not apply to their pre-apprenticeship, their training programs. Correct?
Well, with this amendment, so originally, the original bill said for any employer, employment agency, or labor organization to discriminate in hiring, et cetera, et cetera. This amendment removes employment agency or labor organization. So it simply says for any employer to discriminate in hiring or employment, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the amendment. It removes employment agencies and labor organizations. And again, removes them from simply being, you know, from folks being able to access services through the Commission on Human Relations.
Let me try to ask my question slightly differently. And I haven't spoken with the labor organizations. I want to be upfront and clear about that. Today is the first that I've heard from them. But I did sort of hear, understand that one of the concerns was you could be potentially putting some of the trades at odds with one another, or having, some have a disadvantage in sort of competing, because you have some that are inside the city and some that are outside of the city. So as an example, I think Ironworkers Local 3 on Liberty Avenue.
Right.
So all of a sudden, they would have a burden that the carpenters do not have a burden.
That the carpenters wouldn't have.
This removes that burden by removing the labor organizations in its entirety.
Right.
Okay.
No, labor organizations, employment agency or labor organization.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I want to start by saying, originally, when the sponsor of this bill came to me, I was supportive, okay? I wasn't thinking what it might mean to the building trades. It took Councilman Wilson, thank you, Councilman Wilson, to say, "You just need to check with the building trades," right? So I've done that extensively. I have been in talks, whether it's be with Steve or Brandon and every other labor leader, okay? It really comes down to safety, period. That's it. That's what we're concerned about. Every year, I see Steve and others down at the memorial service that we have down Market Square of people who have lost their lives working these dangerous jobs. It takes nothing for somebody to step off a beam if they're not concentrating, or even cause somebody else their lives, okay? I've lost good friends, boiler makers, and boilers, killed, okay? When you start talking about the building trades, what they pride themselves in is safety, period, okay? This flies in the face of that, all right? Anytime that we delve into and try to, you know, rearrange collective bargaining agreements that they adhere to and works for them is not our duty. It's not our job to do that, okay? I have talked to all the labor leaders, I know you have talked to some, 2AT, Tommy McIntyre, Greg Bernard, I could go on and on and on. They oppose this legislation. What they would really like to see is what Philadelphia has in place in other major cities to protect the rights of our workers, okay? So in no way should we even be interfering in this at this time. If federal laws change, state laws change, they will adapt, and we will make sure that, you know, their, safety is paramount, period, with this. So I want to be clear, I know there's two amendments for council members, and I know Councilwoman Kelsmith came here. If you support the trades, if you respect their opinion about safety, they have been, there's not any of them that have come to me and said, "We're okay with this," okay? In fact, all of them have said, everyone I've talked to have said, "No, we don't want that," okay? They don't want to run the risk. They don't even want to, just the notion of it is not good for their industry. So you know, Councilwoman Kelsmith, there's two amendments today. Barb's offering the first one, which we're speaking to now. I'm going to offer the, yeah, so I'm saying if you support the trades and what they're asking us to support for their safety, we're forced to vote the First Amendment down, and then I will put the amendment in that I know that the building trades know is what's best for them, and we will be, I hope, hopefully, voting that up, and we will be done with it, okay? So just want to let you know where things were. I didn't, we didn't have a chance to talk. I know you're on your way in. So with that, I'll yield and maybe speak to my amendment when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still on first round. Back to Councilwoman Warwick, because she had, just as a reminder, comments before we entered first round for this amendment.
Yeah, so I just want to introduce, just sort of address the question of safety. There are a number of industries in Pittsburgh that have figured out how to allow workers who are also medical marijuana patients to safely and effectively work in their workplace. to safely and effectively work in their workplace. This includes hospitals, this includes our own Pittsburgh firefighters and paramedics. These are life-or-death industries, just like any other, where split-second decision-making is critical to everything they do. I want to underscore again that it is exclusively the construction industry, knowing that they have an opioid crisis on their hands among workers. And specifically, you know, underscoring this issue of chronic pain, right, because of the high rate of injury. This is the industry that is denying their workers. So, I just want to underscore. If you are working in construction right now, say you're 46 years old, and you get a cancer diagnosis, and you do chemotherapy, and that chemotherapy causes some type of nerve damage or whatever, and your doctor gives you a choice between opioids to manage that or medical marijuana, you cannot choose the safer option, because you will lose your job. That is what the employers in the construction industry are doing to their workers. And that is what they are doing to the building trades by insisting on exclusion, excluding medical marijuana patients. That is the reality on the ground. So, and again, knowing full well, this idea that you can't test is patently false. You can run, if you suspect a worker, whether they have a medical marijuana card or not, of being under the influence and, you know, and/or after a workplace accident, you can't get their level on a urine test, but if you feel the need, you're like, this, you know, this worker is, you know, we think they are impaired, you can do a blood test and establish whether or not they have 10 nanograms per milliliter or more in their blood, which, under Pennsylvania law, would exclude them. And you say the law needs to catch up. The law in Pennsylvania is that medical marijuana is legal. That is the law. At any rate, I'll leave it at that. I just wanted to address this issue of safety. I think that, you know, we trust our workers to use their medications responsibly, and I don't understand why this industry doesn't feel that it can also trust its workers to use their medication responsibly.
Any further comments for first round? Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Coming in this morning, I thought I understood this clearly, that I think I do now. Honestly, like, I'm comparing both of these amendments side by side, and I now have a lot of questions. And I've talked with both sponsors, and like, I've spent time on this. But I am clearly not either an expert in medical, you know, drug testing, nor really even, I'm embarrassed to say, in the kind of like NLRB stuff that I feel like I should be better at. So, like, my, when I'm looking at the competing amendment that we're not discussing officially yet, but that Councilwoman Warwick has referred to, and it says that any employer of any kind, not necessarily that has a site with I-beams under construction, right? Any employer of any kind in the whole city that may not be doing any kind of construction at all, of any kind, no drywall, no I-beams, no paint, nothing, is still exempted. And so, now I'm really confused, because that wasn't what I had thought I understood that this amendment was addressing. And so, so there's that. So, this is maybe, the one we're not really officially discussing is far broader than it seemed on its face. And then I similarly thought that the Councilwoman Warwick's amendment that we are discussing was also narrower than, and I still think maybe it is narrower than was just kind of implied. So, exempting an employer who is either an employment agency, I guess like Master Builders, or a labor organization like the Ironworkers on Liberty Avenue in Councilwoman Warwick's amendment, I thought only exempted them when they're acting as an employer. So, when they're like the apprenticeship, you know, they have an apprenticeship program. And so, like, in applications to an apprenticeship program, they wouldn't be put at a disadvantage against the apprenticeships who are based in a labor union whose facility is in Moon Township, right? And so, then they would be in equal footing. But the way you said today at the table, it sounded like your amendment exempted all, like, ironwork in the city.
No, so the labor organizations.
When it's an employer.
But they're not employers.
But when they have apprenticeships, they're accepting the apprenticeship.
But they're not employers. They're accepting apprentices, but they are not employers.
And that's what's exempted. But it's not that the worker, the ironworker who's on a job in the city, under your amendment...
Is employed by the general contractor.
Is employed by a general contractor, that's not exempted.
That is not exempted.
In your...
Exactly. It is only the employer that is against whom you can make a complaint with the Commission on Human Relations, which is really what this is all about.
Apologies, Councilwoman. No, it's, interrogatory is fine. It's a little hard to hear you from over here, if you can speak into the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah. Again, thank you, Madam. Thank you. Do you want to repeat what you said?
Oh, just that it is, that it is exclusively for the, that it is only against an employer that you could come to the Commission on Human Relations and seek this, you know, file a complaint or whatnot, that we would accept that. That's the idea.
I think I have clarity on your...
I mean, the law, I just, I don't want to confuse the law in Pennsylvania, which is you cannot discriminate against medical marijuana patients, period. That's the law. This is just about who kind of has, you know, who has access to, you know, who is the Commission on Human Relations going to say, "Oh, okay, yeah, we'll accept this complaint and investigate further." I mean, anybody in any of these scenarios, if they wanted to hire a lawyer and file a complaint with the Pennsylvania Commission on, you know, Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission, could do so, but that's obviously a much more arduous process.
Okay, so, I guess I have this open-ended question that I'm not sure we can answer at the table, which is like, so, even though there are hypothetically employers who would be exempted because they are subject, party to a valid collective bargaining agreement that specifically addresses the pre-employment drug testing of such applicants, this is in the amendment that we're not officially discussing. I don't know if there are any. I'm embarrassed to say, I don't know. So, now, I feel like I need an attorney almost at the table to kind of, who specializes in labor law to explain whether or not we are right in the way we're understanding either one, the implications of either one of these amendments. And I wish I'd thought of that myself earlier, because we have been discussing them kind of amongst members for some time. So, I'm going to just, I'll give the floor back. I just needed to kind of chime in on first round on that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Councilman Wilson.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted to just recognize that, you know, there's been a lot of conversation, and I appreciate the effort that went into today by both parties, and thank everyone who spoke on behalf of the bill today at public comment. My take on the whole situation is, it seems like the sponsor of the bill is willing to not require the trades to have to abide by, you know, what's in this bill. So, there's an exclusion part of it. So, they both have, both amendments are excluded. I know that there wasn't a motion for this one yet, the one that I'm looking at, but I think everyone has it up there, right? Everyone can receive both the yellow copies up there. So, both of them do, essentially, seek to do with the trades. You know, you're seeking, you know, council person work is seeking to have a cutout, and this one's a cutout as well, from Councilman Coghill. Councilman Coghill's amendment is supported by the trades and the employers. And so, I'm just kind of wondering why we want to just all go with the one that's supported. If there's two cutouts here and I have to pick one, why wouldn't I just pick the one that's supported? I'm happy to have an...
Are you asking me? Yeah. Well, I would say, I would contend that the reason that it is supported, because Councilman Coghill's also cuts out the employers. And I would argue that the reason that the trade unions do not feel comfortable advocating around this issue of medical marijuana for their workers is because their employers are not budging on this issue. This is the employers who are driving this problem. And if the employers would simply comply with the law in the state of Pennsylvania, we would not have an issue of people losing their jobs because they need to, you know, because circumstances arise that they need to use medical marijuana, because that's what's happening now.
I don't have any evidence that anyone's lost their job. Just to be clear, I don't have any evidence that anyone's lost their job over this. And, you know, furthermore, I'm, I'm, uh... The employer is the one that hires the union worker. And they're the ones that carry the burden of any sort of risk. And if it's up to the state to figure it out, then why not leave it up to the state to figure it out?
I would say the state has figured it out. The state has made it illegal, has made medical marijuana legal.
So, why don't we just let it go? Why would we write a bill that then muddies the whole water?
Because the purpose of this is to, by adding medical marijuana patients to the protected class in Pittsburgh, makes it easier to pursue the same reason that we have, the Commission on Human Relations, that we at the city make it easier for people to come and say, "I'm not getting my paid family leave. I'm not getting my sick days. I'm being discriminated against in housing because I'm LGBTQIA." I mean, any number of things, right? That is, that is a service we offer through the city for people who are being discriminated against, whether that be in work or in housing or et cetera. And that is, that's what this bill does, is add medical marijuana patients to the group of people who can take advantage of what the Commission on Human Relations offers. That's the long and the short of it.
Sounds like this is bigger than, sounds like this is bigger than us to figure out. We got people coming here and speaking on behalf of the trades and the employers who do construction in the city of Pittsburgh. I don't know. I have concerns of, that the dialogue isn't that flushed out, and I'm, you know, cautious to support an amendment that isn't supported by, you know, those entities. So, I have no further comment.
Any further comments for first round? Councilwoman Kelsmith, followed by Councilman Mosley.
Thank you. I just feel like this whole bill could have been settled before we got to the table. I think that there should have been some further conversations through the evening last night, if there were some concerns still at the table. We shouldn't have two competing amendments. And I also think that, I'm always defensive of the women not being talked to when they have bills on the table, so I'm going to say that. But I also agree with Councilman Coghill on a lot of things here. But has anyone asked for an opinion from the Law Department in writing? Do we have any of that? Do you know? Do you know? Do you know?
No, no.
So, we have three labor attorneys in our own law department, so there's no reason we can't hold for an opinion, a legal opinion from them. And I think if we're going to sit here debating about whether or not it's legal, let's get the legal opinions, is what I feel like. That's all I want to say. Does anybody else agreeable to that?
To hold?
To hold for a legal opinion.
You know, I'll let others speak. I am not, I'll tell you. But, you know, I think at this point, it's been clear. I've been, people have conveyed to me that this is a safety issue. We keep losing focus on that. I want to remark to, as far as testing on site, we're now relying on human judgment to see if somebody's impaired. Grab that person, take them off the job that they're so anxious to get done. Test them to see if they're okay. Well, if we then, forming, doesn't recognize this person, they don't always see each other right before they go out. There's no inspection, you know? But if they feel, mention that, or if they feel to see that and apply that test, and there are three, I'm going to use the Ironworkers, because they're in the city of Pittsburgh, and they're 300 feet in the air, it's too late to then test them. It doesn't matter. They're gone, or somebody they're working beside is gone. So, the notion of like, oh, you can just grab them if you feel they're impaired, certainly if they come staggered and drunk, yeah, I think that would happen. When you're on medical marijuana, I don't think it's, it's not obvious to me who's on medical marijuana. We're relying on human judgment there, and again, it flies in the face of safety. I'm sorry, Councilwomen, I know you have the floor, so...
I was going to say that, but I wanted to hear what you had to say, because I think we should have had this conversation last night, all of us, you know, at least a few of us to know what was going on here. But I've always deferred to you when it comes to union stuff, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, because I'm not their cup of tea, so I will just say that.
Sure you are.
But I would just say, but I know that you have a good relationship, a working relationship, but I also, I hear Councilwoman's concerns, but, um... That's it, that's it for me. I just, I don't know how...
Okay, thank you. We have Councilman Mosley next for first round, and then we'll start second round.
Thank you, and I just have, I think, a couple, kind of just general questions. Obviously, there's no one that's able to come to the table to answer them, but, you know, one thing I'd be interested in is, you know, having, you know, you know, some sort of report on, you know, any instances, if there are some, of folks who may have or may not have lost their jobs because of, you know, they have a medical card. And I also would, you know, be interested in finding out, you know, from the various building trades, how many members actually have medical cards? Because one thing I haven't been able to wrap my head around throughout, you know, this whole discussion is like, how many people are we, you know, actually talking about? You know, are we talking about a handful of people in each trade? Are we talking about dozens and dozens, you know, of members, you know, throughout the building trades? So, I'm really having a hard time understanding how many people are currently in the unions this is impacting. Obviously, this doesn't speak for the folks who would be, you know, pursuing coming into the trades that have medical cards, because obviously, you know, they're not members. We don't have any record of who those, you know, people might be, you know? But for me to have, you know, a better way to truly, you know, wrap my head around what is the true impact of this going to be in a real way, in the real lives of the people that we're talking about, it would be helpful, you know, to know of potentially any instances where this has come up and affected somebody's employment currently, but also how many brothers and sisters throughout the building trades currently hold medical cards. And that's, I'll yield back my time.
Thank you. Any further for first round? Second round, Council President Lavelle, followed by Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. As I've sat here and tried to wrap my head around this and understand how the law is going to play itself out, I think we're now at a point where we're having a more style, a conversation about style more than substance. These two amendments are actually not competing against one another. They're actually compatible. My, as I think about this, my personal recommendation would... My, as I think about this, my personal recommendation would be to do a verbal amendment to Councilwoman Warwick's proposed bill amendment in verbally accepting item C, because these two are actually compatible amendments. They don't harm one another. I don't want to do that if that's not her wish. But I would either recommend passing both of these and/or simply amending Councilwoman Warwick's bill to accept the language that is not yet on the table, but we could bring to the table. Because these can actually be together. They're not competing amendments.
Thank you. We have, next we have Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I was quite surprised this morning, I didn't have a conversation with the sponsor, that her amendment is, as you said, very, very similar to what the amendment that I've been really in the building trades have been asking for from the beginning, okay? I didn't have that conversation again with the sponsor. So, you know, I know I have her amendment in front of us today, and I know we have the one that, you know, that the building trades and the labor unions support. That's the one that I will be supporting. And if, if the sponsor wants to add anything or possibly combine the bills, you know, I almost need an attorney if we're going to do that, let me tell you. I am, they, they seem compatible to us, but when you get into the weeds, I don't know if anything's there or not. I don't have an attorney here on hand to go through each particular line. I do find them very similar and was quite surprised that this amendment came up when I've been pleading with the sponsor for a month now. And to see something that's very similar, I thought, well, we could have saved a lot of back and forth and just put the amendment in that Philadelphia has and other major cities. And everybody's safe at that point. So, so, you know, I'll, I'll wait for others to say anything. And I did, I did want to say one other thing as to, um... Okay, I'll just yield your now, and I'll wait for my amendment.
Councilwoman Warwick. At the risk of repeating myself, I do want to underscore that my amendment requires employers, right, gives recourse against employers who are discriminating. Councilman Coghill's amendment does not provide that recourse against employers. So, again, to underscore, if Councilman Coghill's amendment passes, any worker not working under a valid collective bargaining agreement, regardless of industry, any worker not working under one of those agreements would have access to the Commission on Human Relations to file a complaint about, you know, regarding employment discrimination around medical marijuana. But any union worker would not have that, would not have that service available to them. So it wouldn't just be excluding construction industry workers, although those are the ones sort of in most dire need of this. It would be all workers, all union workers. So I just want to underscore that that is what Councilman Coghill's amendment does. My amendment excludes employment agencies and labor organizations who are not employers, right? So you can, so no matter whether you're union or not-union or whatever, you could file a complaint against your employer. I just wanted to clarify that. So they're very different, in my opinion.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson.
So, I appreciate the comments, and there's a lot of interrogatories going on here. So can I have an interrogatory? So you say employers, as though, since I'm trying to follow closely, are you saying just employ... Or maybe I should have interrogated with Councilman Coghill, but both if I'm allowed, that it's just employers who are entering into a bargaining agreement? Right, or is it?
Who are in one.
And so it's just the ones that are in a bargaining agreement, which is...
It's applicants whose.
Literally every employer that's going to have construction done with a union company is going to, is going to... They're going to enter into a bargaining agreement. So it wouldn't be any employer, it would be only the ones that are...
Right. So all of those union workers would not have access to, to, to file a complaint about discrimination with the Commission of Human Relations? If you are work, I mean, maybe you should read Councilman Coghill's amendment. "Any applicants whose prospective employer is a party to a valid collective bargaining agreement that specifically addresses the pre-employment drug testing of such applicants," right? So if you're not a union worker and you're not working under a collective, then, then you could come and get help filing a complaint. But if you are a union worker, you cannot. And, and, and your, and your CBA addresses, right?
Yeah, because it's up to the agreement, which is what the current...
Right. So if, again, if you are a worker.
Current unions that have that in their contract.
And you have, you know, all of a sudden you're working, and now you have, you know, suddenly, for whatever reason, issues with chronic pain or Crohn's or, I don't know, epilepsy or any of the, of the 20 or so, you know, PTSD, cancer and remission therapy. And you need to use medical marijuana to, to treat that issue.
So in the scenario, in that scenario.
You would not, you would, you would, you could lose your job in there, and you would not have any recourse through the city.
So if the, if the, if the agreement says with the employer that, you know, you can't have a medical marijuana card, what would your amendment do?
It would provide you recourse, if, if, if the employer is in the city of Pittsburgh, right, it would provide you recourse through the Commission on Human Relations. You could go to the commission and say, hey, medical marijuana is legal in Pennsylvania, and my employer is now firing me because.
Amendment does not cut out the trade industry.
My, it, no, no, mine, so my amendment.
You said they could file a complaint, so I wouldn't.
Right.
I would think that that.
But only against employers.
But that would be followed through, and then that would be only against employers.
Right. A labor organization is not an employer. An employment agency is not an employer. Employers go to labor organizations and employment agencies to hire workers.
I get the whole process, it's just, um... You could say employer, or you could say union. We're still talking about the trade industry, so there's still, still workers that have to be hired to do the job. So I'm, I'm just... Okay, I just think you two, if you get together, figure this out, because I think... I don't know. I don't know how you would be doing, uh... I don't know how you would be working with, like, working on amendment that seeks to alleviate the, the discussions that are happening with the, the trade industry. You know, the concerns of the trade, just like Philadelphia did. You know, the same issues coming up here in Pittsburgh. So I'm just confused on how we would arrive at an amendment that then really isn't, you know, providing a path. So it's still including them, still including them. Still including the workers, still including the union workers. So, I'm clear. All right.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So, so I'm going to, I'm going to jump in with some of my thoughts and, and I guess three possible suggestions, although you can ignore my suggestions, of course. I've really wrestled with this bill since its inception and since it's, you know, the amendments that have been floated and well into the discussion today. So a couple of things that I don't think have been said, that I wanted to make sure were said, were in no particular order. One, this is different than Philadelphia. I think Councilwoman Warwick said this already, but this is different from Philadelphia because Philadelphia can regulate business and therefore have a whole department that proactively inspects employers to see whether they are complying with this. We don't, so therefore, under this bill, this would be very different from Philadelphia, whereby, like, the employer would have to be empowered enough, sorry, the employee, the aggrieved employee, who is a user, a legal user of medical marijuana, would have to know about this bill and then go, and then know about the Commission on Human Relations and go to them to file a grievance or a complaint against their employer. And then the Commission on Human Relations would investigate and find their findings, if they are willing to investigate. And so because of that, because of there's, there's a lack of proactive inspection, it doesn't maybe empower some, some employees, but I, I don't think there would be a material difference to what is already existing under state law. I think the struggle, I mean, I've passed many, many, many bills that add new protected classes, and the struggle constantly is to educate both employers and employees that the bill exists, that they have rights, right? So regardless of whether this bill passes or not, I think it'll be interesting to have an ongoing conversation with Rachel Shepard and CHR to see, are they getting an uptick in complaints around medical marijuana use as a result of the publicity of this bill? Because that's something we should continue to track. And then, second though, if we were to either combine these two amendments or if we were to pass Councilman Coghill's amendment, I guess I still see two paths for filing grievances. If you were not within a valid collective bargaining agreement or party to a valid collective bargaining agreement, you would then be able to go to CHR. And we could get CHR to just blanket all of those, as much as possible, employers to let them know and employees, this is, this is your responsibility as an employer, and this is your right as an employee. And then I guess what I'm understanding is that if you're part of a valid CBA and you don't like your CBA, you could, well, you could file a grievance with your, with your union. Maybe I'm naive in thinking that you could organize your fellow labor leaders or labor members in that union to fight for a, a CBA that includes better rights for medical marijuana use. So either way, you have a path. That's kind of where my head is right now. So again, I'm still kind of on the fence, or I see kind of, I'm cursed to be able to see a, a path forward with both of these amendments. But I'll, I'll leave it there for now. I guess the three, the three different options we have are, one is procedurally, one is we could do what Councilman Lavelle suggests, combine the amendments and take a vote with a voice vote and a voice amendment. Two is, we can proceed with a vote on the first amendment that's been introduced, Councilwoman Warwick's amendment. The third is, we could withdraw the, the motion to amend and hold for an additional week. Those are three possible options. So I'll, I'll leave it there for now. I'm not going to suggest anything right now or motion anything right now. But if anyone has something to clarify my assumption around being able to file a grievance under a CBA on this issue, I'd, I'd welcome that as well. All right, we're still on second round. Any further for second round?
Did I go on second round?
You have. We can move to third round.
Yeah, right, right. That, that's okay. I'll, I'll wait until, you know.
Third round, Councilman Wilson.
My recommendation is for the family to come together and try and figure it out over morning coffee, because, you know, it was, what was it, last week? Someone voted no on a bill, that final vote. Everyone was like, everyone looked like a gopher, because like, we're all voting on everything together usually. Pittsburgh's small. I feel like I run into someone who knows my cousin or my sister every day. So can we just try and, they're not that far though. You know, we're all here, they're here, everyone who has already in their contracts here. I just feel like there's a better, better ending to this than today.
Is there a motion?
May I?
So we would need, procedurally, we would need the person who motioned to, the council member who motioned to amend, to withdraw that amendment. Okay. So, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think it's important to note, first of all, in the building trades, they have a rehabilitation program, okay? If anybody comes in and gets a positive marijuana test, they are not fired. They're not fired, okay? They are relieved from the job. And until they come back with a clean test, then they're back on the job. They, they can't afford, they, they want to keep their good workers, but they also want to keep them safe. That's the most important thing. So I will tell you, I, I think I've exhausted myself and my efforts with the sponsor as far as, you know, trying to meet in the middle, I believe. If she's willing to entertain that notion, I would be willing to, you know, entertain it myself and withhold my amendment. At this point, I would rather personally just vote one or the other amendment through today. I've already got hours and hours of conversations and work in this, and I am exhausted by it, okay? I think it's pretty clear that the building trades are concerned about safety. That's what it comes down to. And I was talking to somebody just yesterday, okay, in the building trades. I'm not going to mention the person's name. But I said, so, you know, um... If somebody has can, gets cancer or has aches and pains and is prescribed medical marijuana, and they're an ironworker, times they're 300, 400 feet near, that so-called business manager, and again, I'm not talking about the ironworkers, this is in general, now has a decision to say, well, we're either going to permit you because we want you to have your medical marijuana. If it's making you feel better, nobody is against that. I'm not against that. I, I, that's why I was originally, you know, for your, your, your legislation. But here's the thing, they're not going back up in the air. They're not, okay? So they only have so many clerical, you know, take for instance, I'm, I'm throwing out numbers general, okay? 2,000 ironworkers, let's say. They may have eight or nine clerical types of positions that you can reposition somebody so they don't lose their job. But one thing they're not going to do is compromise the safety of the other workers and the worker who's actually on the medical marijuana bill. Do not want somebody 300 feet near next to me, or I do not want somebody 300 feet near who is on medical marijuana at this stage. That it is a risk, it impairs judgment. I think that's been proven time and time again. We don't want to see anybody fired. If that person can do their job five days a week and just, you know, medicate on the weekends, then that would work, but, you know, I don't think that's likely. So, you know, again, it's about safety. Nobody gets fired for, for, for a, for a positive test. They are put in a program and they get another chance. That's the way it works there. This is not a reason, any, any notions that this is, and I've heard these notions, I will tell you, that this is a way for the building trades to fire people, discriminate against people. Couldn't be farther from the truth, I will tell you. So, so, you know, that's, I would prefer to, to vote this one, one or the other today, personally. I'll let the sponsor speak to it, if she's willing to bend. You know, I already see from her comments, there's differences that I can't anticipate. I'm not an attorney. I don't have Josh Bloom here, okay? Maybe we need him here. But I'm willing to entertain for, or to, to hold it or combine them. But my, my personal preference is to vote one or the other through today. And then when state, federal laws change, everybody needs to adapt. And the building trades will as well. So that's my comment. Thanks.
Thank you. Third round, Councilwoman Warwick.
I mean, I don't know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm in this too deep, but I feel like Councilman Coghill is making my argument for me, like, in his comments. You literally just said, we don't want to, like, oh, you need medical marijuana. We don't want to fire you, but we're gonna. We're going to take you off work. And then you're going to have to do a rehabilitation program.
Okay, okay.
And then you're going to do a rehabilitation, as if you are using illegal drugs, which you are not, right? Again, we are talking about patients using medical marijuana legally, just like patients who can use opioids legally and Vicodin legally and Xanax legally and all of these things with a prescription. things with a prescription, and we trust them to do that responsibly, and we should also be trusting them to do that responsibly here, but if you are randomly drug testing and then sending someone home from, who, who has a medical marijuana, a valid medical marijuana card, if you are randomly drug testing them on just any day and then sending them home because a urine test is positive without doing a further blood test to figure out just how, you know, just how much, you know, whether it's within this 10 nanograms per milliliter, then you are discriminating against that person. I, I, I don't, I mean, I'll leave it at that, it just seems so clear to me, but maybe I've just been, been too deep in this, and, and, you know, and I, I, I fundamentally believe, and I think that the, and, you know, I, I'm not going to speak for our trade, but I've certainly had numerous conversations where everyone else understands what I'm saying, and it is the employers in this industry who are not willing to budge despite the fact that medical marijuana is legal in the state of Pennsylvania, they will not budge. The laws have caught up, but they will not budge, and, and therefore it makes it very difficult for the, for the labor organizations that provide the workers to that industry to kind of, you know, negotiate through this. And it's always this sort of, oh, in the future, oh, when the feds do it, oh, when, well, we can do something right here today in Pittsburgh, to make a tiny, tiny dent in this issue, to make a tiny statement as a city that we, this is not okay, we don't want our workers to be discriminated against like this, in any industry, and that the state law lays out very clearly what is and isn't acceptable, you know, at work in terms of blood levels and tasks and all that type of thing. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Okay, so we have had three rounds of discussion about the amendment on the table. I'd like to call for a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Sharland.
No.
Mr. Coghill.
No.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Did you say no?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
No.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
No.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
No.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ayes, four, noses, five.
So that moves us on to further discussion on Bill 705. Any additional?
If I can.
You have the floor.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Coghill.
First of all, I want to say to Councilwoman Warwick, you keep saying it's the employers, it's the employers. I've had no discussion with the employers. I've had all discussions with the building trades who are worried about their safety. What employers are you referring to?
I'm referring to the employers who are here, I think, are they still here?
Okay, who? I mean.
The general contractors who are doing random blood test, you know, random marijuana tests on medical marijuana patients.
Okay, well, I don't want to get into bringing anybody up here, I really don't, unless you want to bring them to the table, that's fine.
No.
Okay, so, so I don't know who you're talking about, we've had no discussions with employers. Employers are not pushing the building trades to, if that's what you're insinuating, I don't know, but that's what it sounds like, so. Secondly, I just want to make sure that never did I say you're fired, I'm not making your argument for you, what I'm saying is, when you get a positive test on one of the building trades sites, you get a second chance, is what you get, okay? They want you to come back with a clean test, they want you to work, especially if you know the job and your experience, they need you to be there, they really do. So, so they're not looking to fire anybody, they're looking at all means to keep them there, but at the same time, they're not going to compromise the safety of other workers. It's, it's that simple in this whole thing, it's that simple. That's the argument of the trades, you know, I've, we talked ad nauseam about it, I would like to offer my amendment at the proper time, you can tell me when, Madam Chair, unless somebody else has something to say, or.
Would you like to make a motion?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Councilman Coghill's amendment. Councilwoman Gross.
I am, I'm just going to reiterate what I said on the first one, too, and I appreciate Councilwoman Lavelle's comment that these amendments, even though they're presented as competing, don't compete on substance. And I, I recognize that I didn't really understand that until this discussion, because the, the sponsors are clearly not supportive of each other's amendments, and I, and I've had conversations with both sponsors, and I, I'm still kind of struggling to understand the, the exemption in the current amendment that we're discussing of collective bargaining agreements, because the way I understood it, and as it applies in Philly, which we are not, and as it applies in Philly is under a section of code that we don't have, it's really applying to the building trades, right? And so that's why both amendments really are in the same spirit of making sure that there is some exemption for trades that are in the city of Pittsburgh and/or where we're concerned about safety on construction sites in the city of Pittsburgh. So I'm going to, just even though I know we, we have it in writing, I'm going to write the, I'm going to read out loud, even though I think it was read before the, the current language that we're now discussing under Councilman Coghill's amendment. So it's got all the same language as Councilwoman Warwick's amendments, on, I've checked every page side by side, and then it doesn't, curiously, does not exempt the ironworkers apprenticeship program on Liberty Avenue, which I think you probably do want exempted, but you haven't exempted it here. Okay, okay, so, so you're saying, you don't need that one because it's subsumed here, so I'm going to read the one that you vetted, thank you for clarifying that. It adds Section C, any applicants whose prospective employer is a party to a valid collective bargaining agreement. So Councilman Coghill was telling me, I'm not sure if the audience could hear on the mics, that that also includes apprenticeship programs located in the city of Pittsburgh. So the collective valid bargaining agreements that specifically addresses the pre-employment drug testing of such applicants. So that amendment would be for prospective employers in the city of Pittsburgh who are subject or party to valid collective bargaining agreements, but not all of them, the ones that specifically address pre-employment drug testing of such applicants. And would include, which I didn't understand now, but I now do, would include the goal of the amendment that Council just voted down, that Councilwoman Warwick was put on the table, so, oh, Council voted against that amendment, it does also affect the amendment that was voted down. Okay, that's, I just wanted to say all that out loud, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, let's take a roll call vote on this amendment as well, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Ms. Warwick.
No.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Ayes, eight, noses, one.
Amendment passes, and any discussion on the bill as amended prior to final vote at this meeting? Councilwoman Warwick.
I just want to underscore, for anybody working in the construction industry, it is illegal for your employer to discriminate against you for being a medical marijuana patient, so please know that, and I'm sorry that we didn't get this done, but know that you have, you know, you have rights as a medical marijuana patient, and you cannot be fired in the state of Pennsylvania for being a legal user of medical, you are not a drug addict, you are not someone who needs to be reformed or sent to a program. If you are a legal medical marijuana user, you have rights in Pennsylvania to use your medication, so unfortunately, it looks like we're not going to be able to help you in the city of Pittsburgh if you happen to be in a union that, you know, has a collective bargaining agreement that, you know, deals with the issue of drug testing. That's a shame, but please know that if you are facing this issue at work, or your doctor is recommending that you use medical marijuana, or, you know, versus opioids, or whatever your situation is, know that in the state of Pennsylvania, you are legally allowed to use medical marijuana. That's it.
Further comments? Councilwoman Kelsmith.
I just, I want to just say, I feel, I'm glad that I voted with Councilman Coghill, he was the first person to approach me and ask me to work with him, and so I worked with him. But I do want to say, Councilwoman Warwick, I know when you do things, you come from your heart and, and you do it with such passion, and I, I know that you're trying to help people, and I want to, hopefully, maybe we can get to a place where we're all working together to improving this before final vote, to make sure that we're working together to a place where you're both comfortable, and that the unions are comfortable and, and everyone else in between. And especially, I think I'm the only person here at the table who lives in a union household, so I definitely appreciate, you know, all the efforts and, and, and I know my husband's in chronic pain, so I do understand, and I do, I do appreciate the efforts. So I would hope that over the next week, we can get together and come up with some, some, at least maybe further amendments to make everyone feel more comfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments? Councilman Sharland, Councilperson Sharland.
Thank you. So I, I think this kind of, this discussion here underscores one of the challenges that I think we all face as electeds, and, and anyone who works in the public sector, and, and anyone who works in policy, that we often face, and there's, there's a battle that, an attention I think that we all face in terms of, do you want to have incremental change for the good, or do you want to radically overthrow the system? And unfortunately, there, there are things that I think we all agree we'd like to overthrow, and we'd like to change, but in reality, we have to work in a world of incrementalism and, and taking one more bite out of the apple. And I want to thank you, or really congratulate you, Councilwoman Warwick, on being able to pass this bill with these protections that are necessary, and we're, we're able to do that today. We may not, we may not have been able to have the radical change that you wanted to, but we are able to move closer or towards, you know, the, the society that we want to see and the city that we want to see here, and for that, you know, you should be congratulated. I want to thank Councilman Coghill for working tirelessly on making sure that labor and, you know, our, our pathway to the middle class here in the city is represented in this bill. Ultimately, you know, I've, I've talked to labor leaders, and we need federal law to change, we need, we need state law to change before we're able to actually have this radical shift that we want to see, but today is, is a good bill, I think that, that is ultimately what we're, we've ended with here, and we are moving one step closer to the city that we want to see, so congratulations to you.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Councilman Coghill.
No, I just want to say to Councilwoman Warwick, I respect your passion, I really do, I really, you know, admire it, I do, and, and you're not going to stop, I know you're not going to stop, and someday, you're going to, we're going to get it on the books just like you, you want to see it. Today is not today, that's all, but, but I respect you, I respect your opinion, I'm sorry we were at odds on this entire thing, but, you know, I wish that in the end, when you're, when I saw your amendment today, I thought, well, why didn't we just do this in the beginning and just go with the original amendment that I proposed, if they're, if, like, our council president says they're identical, which they're not, I don't think. So, so, you know, I think we could have met somewhere, though, in the middle there, possibly, but as it turns out, you know, I, and I, I want to close with this, if you are a medical marijuana card holder, the building trades have your back, okay? If they, if there is a problem on, in the building trades, again, they have a program to put you to, they're about safety, paramount for safety, that's what it's about, this, this entire conversation's about, so I want to thank those of members who voted affirmative on, on this amendment, this is the right thing to do at this point in time, and I look forward to, you know, talking with you in the future as to, you know, other passions that you have to bar, I do, I respect your passion, I respect your fight, and I congratulate you for it.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion here? I'd like to take a vote. I just want to say, I know there's oftentimes desire to hash things out behind closed doors to be able to come and have sort of a very neatly tied up with a bow package to offer, but in this case, I actually think this debate and this conversation at the table was worth having. I don't often think that, I'm pretty impatient, I don't love to have long-winded discussions just for the sake of talking, but I think this is a really important discussion to have. One, because I mentioned before, it's so hard to educate people about their own rights and employers about their responsibilities. Two, you know, so this kind of served as its own PSA for what your rights and responsibilities are. Two, you know, I think it's helpful for people in the public at large to see how we grapple with difficult and complicated conversations. And three, I'm hoping forward, going forward, like, that this isn't the end of this, and we know it won't be because there is state law that's being debated on recreational marijuana use, right? And there's going to have to be a big decision point around how particularly labor unions, trades, construction industry handles that, if and when that comes to a bipartisan agreement and vote. So, you know, thank you, Councilwoman Warwick, for bringing this to us to consider, thank you to Councilman Coghill for your work on this. You know, we didn't really come to full agreement, but I'm hopeful that we can use our power and our knowledge and the knowledge that is present today in the form of labor leaders, particular construction trades, to help meet with and lobby our state officials to find the best possible solution for us here, with real teeth that can enforce unlike what we, you know, don't have in Pittsburgh. So happy to help coordinate that with appropriate state legislators as well in the future. Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, I mean, I do just, just for the sake of, of clarity, you know, medical marijuana is legal in the state, even if we pass recreational marijuana being legal in the state, I guarantee that the employers in the construction industry will exclude recreational marijuana users just like they're trying to exclude medical marijuana users, and they would probably have more grounds to do that, right? They will use whatever, I mean, I've had so many conversations, and whatever excuse in the book, with, and, and none of them concrete, right? Whether it's levels, we can't test, but we can, oh, blood's too hard, oh, there, there will be a million excuses for why the construction industry is not doing right by its workers, and they will fight tooth and nail against our labor unions, et cetera, until, I mean, you know, I don't know, may, maybe, maybe some major court battles need to be won, I hope that that happens sooner rather than later, and I wish that we could have helped to be a part of that in Pittsburgh, but anyway, thank you.
All those in favor of Bill 705 as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed? Affirmative recommendation on Bill 705? Thank you so much for the full discussion. That moves us on to Bill 776.
Bill 776, resolution authorizing and directing the Director of the Department of Finance to limit eligibility for the acquisition of properties through the city's side yard sale program to residents who own and occupy property that directly abuts the vacant lot that is to be disposed.
Motion to pre-brief discussion?
Second.
Good discussion.
I just want to thank council members and also Director Gulav for having a lot of side conversations, I feel like every conversation we have is raising kind of more and more broader questions, and so I've heard a desire to hold this for an additional four weeks, so motion to hold four weeks.
Second.
Discussion?
I, I would just like to say one thing on it, if I could, I would like just a legal opinion from both our solicitor, Kubiak, and from our city council solicitor. solicitor Dan Fritzen before it comes up. We have four weeks, so I just want to make sure we're not playing or getting in the weeds with discriminatory behavior. And so that was my original concern with it. And if I could just get clarification in writing from our solicitors, both Fritzen and Kubik, I would appreciate it. And I thank you for holding this bill until we clarify things.
Thank you. So noted, we'll make sure that's communicated properly.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of a four-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for four weeks. That moves us on to new papers, Bill 867.
Bill 867, resolution authorizing the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Binkley Canvey Group LLC for printing services for the popular annual financial report for an amount not to exceed $5,275 over one year.
Is there a motion?
It's approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 867, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to invoices. Is there a motion on invoices?
It's approved.
Second.
Discussion? So we have one note for invoices. Under the Bureau of Police, we see three invoices for Holzer Specialties LLC for vehicle outfit charges. Together, they do exceed the $5,000 limit, however, each invoices for a separate vehicle and invoices that we have verify this, so we don't believe that requires a waiver. Further discussion? All those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Invoices are approved. It moves us on to P cards. Is there a motion on P cards? No, and departmental transfers, I'll just note that verbally moves us on to P cards.
Motion to approve discussion?
Second.
What, discussion?
Yeah, if someone who's able to speak to a new P card, I don't know, the policy for the new P card policy? Okay, no one? There's no new P card policy because the parks and rec can't pay the puppeteer no longer through a P card, and they have to do a contract for $300 or so. Curious, no one can speak to that?
Always can do that.
You want me to get somebody to?
I don't know, I have several emails about it, so I just thought maybe we could. All right. I don't know, we can't pay the puppeteer on the P card anymore.
Um.
No, I'll just.
Okay, is there, is there further comment on P cards? Councilwoman Kail Smith.
I just want to know when the process was changed.
Yeah.
I don't think there's anyone at the table who can answer your question.
Oh, no one even knows what was changed?
So we're working to get someone who can.
And our budget director?
So I will note that there will be a training, a P card training that's offered to all council members and staff. You should have received an email about that. At that point, there will be, you know, obviously question and answer for council members and staff to be able to ask any questions you'd like for clarity. I understand that doesn't answer your question today, so we're working to get Director Olzinger here.
I just think with this being such a hot issue right now, that we should probably have some public conversation about it and we should at least known that there was even some changes. I'm not saying that there shouldn't be changes. I actually absolutely believe that there should be changes, but I think there should be changes in a lot of our departments. And I've actually been telling the solicitor, that our council solicitor. I'm not going to belabor the, all right, I'll wait and talk about it just another time. Thank you.
We have council comment from Councilwoman Warwick.
I mean, I guess I'm a little confused, why, I mean, can't this person just be paid with a check? I mean, I know it maybe takes longer to process. I just, I don't like the idea of people doing business with the city and then not getting paid. I really don't like that, you know, especially, you know, because it just makes people not want to work with the city if it takes too long to get paid.
That's why I'm bringing it up.
Right, right.
Like the roving our card is.
I mean, we have someone from the controllers.
So I've gotten word that the person in question has been paid by invoices this week, we just approved. If that helps to clarify.
Yeah, I mean.
I think there are a lot of questions that we still have to have answered.
I see it here, okay.
We can have, certainly, I will work to get the appropriate people at the council table next week so that we can have this discussion publicly around P cards in addition to whatever, to the training that we have that's already been scheduled for council members and staff. Motion to approve P cards. Oh, sorry, all those in favor of approving P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
No.
One no.
No.
Two no's. Affirmative, P cards are approved. That moves us on to Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Supplemental paper, supplemental paper, Bill 935, resolution approving the recommendation made by the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the blockstone portions of Valonia, Marina, and Uvilla Streets located in Elliott be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section 41706 of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Motion to approve?
Second, thank you.
Discussion?
I don't have any discussion.
Councilman Coghill.
I don't have discussion. I just want to thank Councilwoman Kail Smith. You know, this was not an easy process to get it to where she got to special exemption to do this. And I know she was dealing with the contractors, she was dealing with PWSA, she was dealing with everybody, but so I just want to thank you for your efforts.
Thank you, thank you. Can I, just briefly, there was a lot of utility work in the neighborhood of Elliott, and I often hear people say how forgotten areas are. Elliott got a lot of work done this past year, and I want to thank Domy and PWSA and others who worked together in that area and the contractor, I can't remember his name. But it came to me that there was an opportunity to pave three streets that are cobblestone with a pitch of like 17 to 19 percent, and so they're hills that are cobblestone and over, this is the first time they've been torn up in ages. And they said they could pave this, they could pave the streets with concrete, and it would save the city 250,000 is what it came to me as. Then later, as after the community, I said, let me find out with the community once, we went door knocking, talked to the community, did all kinds of stuff, they said that they definitely wanted it. Then we had a meeting and found out, in that meeting, you were there, Councilman Coghill, that it wasn't going to save us, it was going to cost us $250,000. So then I was a little bit concerned, so I want to thank Pete, our budget director too, and our council solicitor and the director of Domy and deputy director of Domy, Jeff Scallion, I say his name wrong, but Jeff, I want to thank them all and Brian Ralston for all working through all these concerns with us. But at the end, it was determined that even though it was going to cost us, it comes with like a 50-year guarantee almost for the concrete that would last for so much longer, so it was, it was actually wiser to do it now that it's torn up and make it concrete for a lot longer time. So the residents have been dealing with this after we moved the money, then I found out, no, now we also had to have some legislation to, you know, to sustain the move of the money. So I don't know, I just followed wherever the directions were. And so I want to thank the residents of Elliott for their patience and everybody who helped us work through this to get us to this point. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 706, excuse me, 935, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Bill 706.
Deferred paper, Bill 706, resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 173 of the Pittsburgh City Code, the naming of Room 458 in the City-County Building to the Tim McNulty Press Room.
Is it me?
It's your bill, I don't.
Motion to approve. I thought it was, I'm sorry, I thought it was under yours.
Discussion?
I just want to thank Councilman President Laval for hosting the public hearing. I was unable to attend that day. I actually fed about 400 first responders that day and Councilman Coghill and Charlin and I, off and on. But anyway, I just want to thank him for hosting the meetings, I was unable to attend, but I did watch it later and I was surprised in how many people came out in support of it. Tim McNulty left, you know, a great mark here in the city of Pittsburgh, and I don't know his family, and I really feel sad about this in some way, not only because we lost Tim, but because the idea came to me from media people, but it was shared with me initially from John Sibbet, who also works in our building and just recently passed away after, and taking care of this building for so long. And my last words to him were, don't worry, John, one day, I said, before I leave, we'll name something over here after you too. He said, I want the whole building named after me. I said, well, I don't think we're going to be able to do that. So anyway, so I mean, it's bittersweet because he won't be here to see, you know, what he actually helped bring to fruition too. But thank you for everyone who was a part of, I know Councilwoman Strasburg and Councilwoman Gross were here for, in the family, so thank you. Was it family, wait, I'm not sure if it's family. Yeah, it was Kevin Ackland from Penguin.
Kevin, Katie, yeah. Nice guy.
And I'm going to work with Katie to get some kind of program together, dedication to the room, and we'll invite the public. That's it.
Bob Botter.
Oh, Bob Botter from the trip, he was also one of the people that was really instrumental. They are worried, they kept calling and saying they want this done.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councilwoman Gross, followed by Councilman Coghill.
Also, I want to thank you, Councilwoman Kail Smith, for bringing this forward and I really appreciate it. I did attend the public hearing and everyone, it was very touching. And I have spoken to some of Tim's family members as well, and they want to make sure that, you know, that they are very, very grateful. So thank you for this work, appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, good, you can be the emcee, considering your district.
Councilman Coghill.
I also just want to take the opportunity to thank you. I mean, anybody that knows former council president Kail Smith is, she's got the biggest heart in the world, she really does. You don't want to cross her, but, you know, she will go out of her way to make people feel good, and she does it with me, even giving me credit for the meals you deliver, I appreciate that, but most credit, all credit typically goes to you on that. So I want to thank you for doing that last week, and this was really, really nice and really thoughtful and I'm glad that you did that, so thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? I'll just echo what everyone said, it was really, really nice to hear many of the, you know, former coworkers of Tim's come out to speak on his behalf and, and former, yeah, colleagues, folks from the media, friends, and I, you know, I too have spoken to his family members and I know they're so grateful for this honor. And I look forward to ribbon cutting and maybe even, you know, fixing up the press room a little bit, so it's, it's worth, it's worth his, you know, the honor that we're bestowing on him with the name, but maybe not too nice, because I don't think too nice, but fix it up, repaint it, coat it, paint it or something, so we can, we can have that conversation offline. All those in favor of Bill 706, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill, new papers, Bill 868.
Bill 868, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Public Works of the city of Pittsburgh to apply for grant funding from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund to rehabilitate the Brighton Heights Healthy Active Living Center. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement in expenditures not to exceed $500,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 868, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 869.
Bill 869, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Public Works to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the historic former Carnegie Library of Hazelwood Phase 1 Roof Stabilization Repairs Project. The grant proposal asked, the grant proposal includes an ask of $300,000 with a local match of $150,000 for a total project cost of $450,000 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve? Brief discussion?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, so I mean, I am supportive of this application. I do want to say, just for my district, I am ambivalent about this project, so the, it is extremely important to the community. The old Hazelwood Library is, you know, it, there's just lots of history and memory in that building, however, we, you know, it's deteriorating, and so, but at the same time, there is not like a project, so to speak, for the, right? That's sort of the dilemma, right, is that we don't have a project. That said, I, you know, applying for a grant, I think, is worthwhile to try and stabilize the roof so that it doesn't get so deteriorated that it just has to be torn down. And I think that too is something to think, to think about, is if it needs to be torn down, how much is that going to, I mean, it's a, it's a big building, right? So how much is that going to cost? So I am supportive of this, but I do, just for the sake of the public and my constituents, this is a tricky one for me in terms of like dollars and, you know, where you're directing money, so, at any rate, that's all for me.
Thank you very much. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 869, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 870.
It is our property.
Noted. Noted, thank you.
Bill 870, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Sixth Street to Market Square Connector Project in the amount not to exceed $244,556 for this stated purpose.
Motion to approve? Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 870, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 871.
Bill 871, resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County's Gaming Economic Development Tourism Fund for the Upper McCardle Roadway Bridge Repairs Project in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for this stated purpose.
Is there a motion?
Oh, excuse me, yes, motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 871, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 749, deferred paper, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Office of Management and Budget to enter into an agreement or agreements with Aubrey for services relating to non-congregate shelter services related to the home ARP program for a total not to exceed $1,500,000.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Discussion?
Discussion, Councilman Charlin.
Yes, so this is in my district here, I know Councilman Wilson and I have talked about this. Again, as we talked about last time it came up, Aubrey has done a very good job of showing the residents what they plan to do and showing community leaders what their other sites look like in these non-congregate shelters. This again is going to be a very different shelter than anything else that they've run, so we want to see it be successful, which means that the city is going to have to do some things that were not done in the other sites. That includes making sure that our police are equipped, because this is right next to a police station, making sure that we have torn down vacant structures near this building, because this is not like the other Aubrey sites where there would be individuals there as opposed to families. And we are looking at essentially creating a space that if you are someone coming from a shelter, moving to kind of towards the next step, that might, or is still very much at risk of slipping backwards and some of the attractive nuisances that exist close to this site of these vacant properties are still very much a concern. So Councilman Wilson worked with me on this. I did ask for a written explanation from the administration on what we will do as the city to make sure that this site is going to be successful. I did receive that this morning from Chief Frank. Unfortunately, most of my requests are not captured in the written response that was written. I, you know, there are things in here that are kind of broad, broad promises, not acknowledging that there's vacant structures around there that we really need to tear down in order for the site to be successful. So I will support passing this today, but if I do not have better explanation of what we will do as the city to make sure that this site is successful, I will ask that we recommit next week, so that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much. Councilman Wilson, followed by Councilwoman Gross.
I just want to thank the council.
I just want to, uh, thank the councilman, because, um, I think I, I think you're well, well aware, when I called about, um, the current situation in Pittsburgh, when I recently walked the trail, um, in my district on the north side, and, uh, continually try to, uh, call entities that, you know, like, for instance, the county, that, um, you know, they, uh, you know, what the bed count is, wha- what can we do to move people inside, especially since it's gonna get cold out here. So I really appreciate, um, you taking us on and trying to take a good thorough look at this, uh, to make sure that, you know, people are housed. You know, obviously, like, you know, this is, this is the build-out, um, I guess, for, you know, this is home, our money. So looking forward to, you know, obviously seeing these dollars spent. Um, and, uh, you know, I think, you know, a big part of the conversation, I think, what I want to continue with you is, is with the county, because they're, they're the ones that are gonna run it, run, run the shelter. They're the ones that are gonna have the contract with Aubrey. So, maybe we want to, um, continually working on that and, uh, definitely seeing all your concerns and, you know, it's, it's not my bill, but at the same time, uh, in the city of Pittsburgh, we all kind of share the, um, the burden of, of, um, of solving these issues that, you know, when we find people outside. So appreciate you, uh, taking this, uh, taking a thorough look at this and being committed to, to getting it right. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Um, I also am glad to see the money moving. Um, I know that we had questions about kind of how to do kind of rapid housing, but not, not for people who are at risk, right? We're, we're kind of balancing this, but council's been talking about this for two years now. So I'm still gonna use the vocabulary transitional housing for this. I know the county doesn't. I think they're probably referring to this as bridge housing. Um, but it's still going to add capacity in the system. Um, and so we, we need to keep adding project after project. I also have a, a project moving forward that's on the border of my district and, and Councilman, um, Mosley's district. And the more, the more we get in front of this, um, the, the, the more we can help the population of those outdoor come down. And that's really kind of, I think, what everybody, what everybody wants. Um, I don't know how many people are in this facility. I know Councilman Charlin just kind of stepped away from the mic, but, and I don't want to belabor this because we already had long discussions and other things.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five is actually a lot. Yeah, that's a pretty good-sized facility. So between, you know, for the public, that's two facilities moving forward that the county is funding now. Um, and so I'm happy to see these dollars applied to this one as well. Um, the more we can find, the better. Um, and, but it takes a lot of community work. We did a lot of community work, um, in the Stanton Heights location as well. Um, and, uh, I was grateful that the county worked with us on that as well. So, appreciate it. That's all.
Thank you. Further discussion? Council, uh, let's see, we have Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to say congratulations on this, but I do think it was done in the way that they were engaging to the public and, um, and meeting with people. Is that correct?
Aubrey.
Yeah, Aubrey was, right. But I actually think we also need to make sure that we're doing those kinds of things, because I think that's not that people don't want to help people. I think it's when they hear that you're gonna drop people into a neighborhood that may have all kinds of issues that they didn't have before. It's the lack of communication. I think we could probably solve so much more by talking so much more into people and engaging people and hearing what people's concerns are and addressing those concerns. I think with, um, you know, in our district, we had, some of the areas that we had the most problems with were, were larger buildings that became, um, shelters, uh, for different people and, and, and people, they were struggling, even the, the management companies. I think a lot of times it's the management companies that aren't managing the properties. It's not that the people that they mind, it's not the, it's not helping people that people mind, it's the way the properties are managed. And I think it's incumbent upon us to make sure we're doing our inspections the way that we should be doing, that we're doing, offering whatever types of trainings we can offer, and that we're doing some types of transition and, and, and helping people understand what's happening in their neighborhood, and to work with the people in the neighborhood when they actually have an issue, address it, instead of actually sweeping it under the table. And I think that's part of the problem. It's the way we handle things. It's not who people are, it's what we do. So, thank you.
Councilman Mosley, did you have?
Noted.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, second round, Councilman, Council President Charlin.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so, you know, this is exactly, I, I, bridge, transition, I'm not sure, uh, what, what we're calling it at this point, but it is the, the step after someone has been in a shelter, which we know is the, um, is the bottleneck and, and is the thing that, that we really need to increase capacity for. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to see that. The other major point here is that, you know, last night we had the South Side Community Action Network. It's our, our biggest, um, community meeting that we have recurring in the South Side. Roughly eighty people are there. Every single person is talking to us about the homeless crisis that we have in the South Side and what, what is anyone doing to, to solve this. And, you know, again, I, I am, I, I know that this is one of the things that we can do to help move this forward, but we need to make sure that this location is built in an environment that is conducive for it to be successful. And that falls on the city to make sure that we're doing the things around it. Um, Zone Three does not have co-response. Zone Three does not have roots. There are vacant structures left and right outside of this. Um, the individuals, because this will be an individual shelter as opposed to the fa, uh, a family shelter, which is usually what Aubrey runs. Um, that, the stability that comes with having a family, which even in some of these situations is not perfect, now you have folks that have more reason or, or less barriers to relapsing and this, you know, it, it could be very dangerous for the community if the city does not create an environment for it to be successful. Um, and that is, that is my concern. Um, again, you know, I think Aubrey has done an unbelievable job of engaging with the community, um, you know, showing tours, being transparent of, of how they're gonna run this facility. Um, and they have a good track record in their other facilities. They're just, the other places are just very, very different than what they're trying to run in Allentown. So, um, that's, that's my concern. I know we need capacity, and I want that capacity to be successful, and I want us to do our job to make sure that we are building that capacity in a way that works, um, so that this is not a nuisance and is not something that is run out of the neighborhood in a year.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on second round. We had, Councilman Coghill raises his hand first, and then Councilwoman Warwick, and then Councilwoman Kail Smith. Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just, I just want to thank you for, you know, being, uh, having the courage to talk to the community about this. Uh, I've had a, you know, not-so-pleasant experience in one of my neighborhoods. It's not an easy thing to do. Um, I think, you know, when I think about the, uh, encampments, I, I think of your district and I think of Councilman Wilson's district. I think, uh, you know, it's, it's obvious we have to do something to get these folks off the street. I'll remind, uh, the administration, I'll remind the county that a group that we have formed, that Councilwoman Kail Smith put together, that, that then-president came up with three other different types of solutions. Councilwoman Gross and I have pursued even further and, uh, proposed another solution. So there are a lot of solutions. There's no one thing that works. This is one piece, and that's fantastic, especially with the closing of Second Avenue Common. So, I don't know the timeline on this. I don't know if you're sure of it.
Won't be open for next year.
Next year, right, right. Well, next year is warp speed for government, so, uh, we'll take it.
If, if we're lucky.
Right, right. But, uh, thank you for the, the work you've done on this, and, um, I look forward to working with you on the entire situation, um, homeless situation. So, thanks again.
Thank you. Councilwoman Warwick.
Um, yeah, thanks. So I just, um, I, and this is really just because we're on the topic. Um, I know, I want to say it, it did get warm again, but there were a, a couple weeks ago or whatever, we had, you know, it dipped and I definitely woke up and thought, "It's cold out here." And, um, it, it, I mean, I know that I have looked more at the, you know, proposals from Councilwoman Gross, Councilman Coghill of these pallet shelter things. I go through Eliza Furnace Trail. There are folks who have been living there, um, consistently, right? Like the same people consistently for five months, maybe longer, um, who I'm seeing every day. And, um, I, I, I feel like we, it, I don't want to say we, because I don't, I don't know what, but I, I, I would like to, it would be great if, if council members could hear about the plan for this winter, because the, the sort of code blue plan, it doesn't, that doesn't feel like enough. And I understand this is the county, you know, this is not all on the city to do, right? This is also the county, and that it's very important to underscore. Um, but it, it would be helpful for us in answering these questions with our constituents and, uh, also just, you know, as, as things progressively get colder. Um, I, I know in, in Denver, they got up, I don't know how many shelters in forty-five days. I don't know what the cost, I didn't see what the cost was in that sort of case study. Um, but, you know, to know that we are exploring those options. I mean, I know on Eliza Furnace alone, I've got, I don't want to say I, it's not even my district, but I go through there so often, but there's tents and people who've been living there for months and months and months. And even if there was something else there that was better than a tent, uh, with some kind of services attached. But again, I'm, I'm not the expert. I don't want to say we should do X, Y, or Z, but it would, it'd be helpful to know kind of what's, what we're thinking about for, for the next few months.
I was gonna ask.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Let me do it? Okay. Well, first of all, I'm gonna call for a post-agenda for Councilman Charlin. Um, you can cheer. Uh, a post-agenda on the plan for, for the winter for the homeless population.
Good deal.
Motion?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, second, I want to say, I'm glad people mentioned the county, because the plan for five hundred people in, you know, five hundred days or whatever, whatever that is. What is it? Five hundred units. It's not, it sounds like it's tremendous. It's tremendous if it's all in one part in, in the county, but spread out across the county, which is so big and so vast, it's really not that much to absorb. And I, I, but I think when you're making plans to do everything in the city of Pittsburgh, that's when it becomes a problem. And I think that the city should not be accepting it all. The city needs to speak up for the city and needs to say, "We need to have other places to spread this out," so that everybody can absorb what the needs are in the city and, and the region. And so that, I mean, it seems like oftentimes the city takes the brunt of a lot of things, and there's nobody really advocating or fighting for us on behalf of the city. And I would love to see that happen, where they're saying, "Look, we want to do some of these things." And they may be doing those things, but the communication has not come over to us to tell us what they are doing. And so I think that's also some of the things. We'll make sure we get a post-agenda together and we ask some serious questions about what's going to happen, uh, for this fall. And I, it is, it's heartbreaking when people come into, and you see people that are struggling out there. And I want to thank Councilman Coghill, because I don't know if I mentioned this before, but more than once now, he's, uh, he's offered people that are homeless, uh, roofing jobs and other things to get them into. And you actually have people that work for you that were formerly homeless. So I'm gonna, I want to acknowledge that, because I think people don't always know the things you do behind the scenes. So, I want to thank you for, for that, too. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 749, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, new papers, Bill seven, uh, 872.
Bill 872, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning and/or the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with Manchester Citizens Corporation for the purpose of receiving grant funds in the amount of $13,852 to support the city's planning effort to study State Route 65 and ways to connect the chateau in Manchester neighborhoods.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 872, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee chaired by Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Bill 865, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into an agreement or agreements with Paramount Pursuits to provide technical assistance to applicants and awardees of projects from the City of Pittsburgh's Food Justice Fund, sum not to exceed $200,000 over two years.
I'd like to make a motion to hold, uh, just for, in a legal opinion from the Law Department, to actually ask Mayor Dusel also for an opinion on whether we're spending these dollars appropriately, including, um, using conduits and, and other things. Thank you.
Motion to hold. Second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of a hold for a legal opinion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Uh, motion would be held. That moves us on to Bill 866.
Bill 866, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Parks and Recreation to enter into a sponsorship agreement with Clearview Federal Credit Union for the 2024 City of Pittsburgh Gingerbread House Display and Tree Lighting Ceremony at no cost to the city.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 866, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to our last committee of the day, Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
Bill 864, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement or agreements with Matrix Point Software LLC in an amount not to exceed $310,000 over six years for software, professional support, and related training services related to litigation case management for the city's Department of Law.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 864, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Uh, having exhausted our meeting agenda, move on to meeting announcements. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting and standing committees meeting on Tuesday, September 24th, and Wednesday, Sep- September 25th at 10:00 AM respectively. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 AM, the morning of each speaker, each meeting. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadlines. You may also call the clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Uh, from com, comments from members, Councilwoman Kail Smith.
Thank you. I just, um, we've been hearing so much about the finances in the city of Pittsburgh, and it's just such a challenging time right now, but I, you know, I really thought that maybe we should hire a CPA on our side of the hall until we can get something more, um, outlined on what our budget, what our other offices should be doing and not be doing, or how we maybe could restructure some of them. But honestly, the, after a lot of conversations, there are CPAs in the controller's office. And I would really like to know how we can have better access to them, or how we can hear that they're doing their job to make sure that what we're doing here is right. Because if there's something here that's not happening the way it should be happening, then that is the job of the controller to make sure that they're, you know, bringing that to our attention. Um, and I know everybody's busy with a lot of things, but that's why we pay people to make sure we're doing this right. We have a lot going on with all of our neighborhoods. We all represent around thirty-some thousand people, and, I mean, that's, that's larger than most of the municipalities around me, you know, and so I don't think people realize that. And we have very small staffs, m- members. We only have two people in our budget office, and it's not, we're not able to do the things that other people are able to do. So I would like to see more from, um, more access to the controller and, and to the, um, people that she has in her office, giving us real opinions on whether or not what we're doing is, is, is accurate. And working with, I know that she does work with our budget office and with others, and so I don't want to say that she's not doing those things. But I do want to say that I think we need to know that what we're doing here in the city of Pittsburgh is communicated to us, not to the media, but to us. And so I think that's part of the thing that, that's concerning me. I'm, I'm hearing a lot of things lately, and I don't, I'm not here to play politics. I know everybody's, has their thing, and we all want, need to be elected and all those sorts of things. But in the end, I want results for the residents of the city of Pittsburgh, period. I'm not worried about somebody's next election, their next venture, their next thing that they're in, interested in. I'm worried about what we're doing and what we're delivering to the residents. And, and that goes across the board. I don't care who, who it is and who, who we're talking about. So I would really like for us to make sure that we're making, um, sure that we're getting access to the people that are CPAs, that they're already on the ta, already on the payrolls. So, instead of us having to hire them. Um, and maybe that's a briefing more often with, with, with the controller's office. I don't know, but I'll defer that to you, um, as the chairperson. But, but I do want to make sure that we know that, uh, what exactly is happening, and, and that we're getting better opinions and, and information. Because, I mean, when we're reading in the paper, it's hard to decipher what's really happening. So, and we're just sitting here making decisions based on information we're reading in the paper instead of people discussing with us. And so I think that's the other thing. We should make sure that, I mean, I hate to start legislating stuff, but I'm ready to, to say that this is the way the process is gonna be, and I, and maybe looking back at the process we have currently for the budget and revamping that entire process. Thank you.
Thank you. And yes, I'd be more than happy to discuss.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. I'll take a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All those in favor? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you.